On that note, there being a quorum, I will call the meeting to order. The meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record-keeping purposes and also by Mr. Gant. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting? There being none, I will move forward. I don't know if this is what you mean or not. So we are prepared to move forward and take action as a board on bond anticipation notes. I will have our clerk make a motion in accordance with the required language.
Could I just ask, we're not doing bond anticipation notes though, are we? We're doing bonds.
It's bonds.
It's a bond, yeah.
It's a bond, but not anticipation note.
Okay, it's a bond. As the motion, I'm sure, will detail.
I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Topsfield, Massachusetts, the town certified that at a meeting of the board on February 21st, 2019, of which meeting all members of the board were to be notified in a future form as present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody.
I'll just want to say, so I'm going to treat these as each been a motion. It's a huge motion, I'll just say that.
Voted that the sale of the $12 million, 780,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019 bonds of the town dated March 1st, 2019, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets and Division of National Financial Services at LC, at the price of $13 million, 586,734 dollars and 37 cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on March 1 of the year in principal amounts and bear interest at the expected rates as follows. Year 2020, amount $380,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2021, $390,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2022, $475,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2023, amount $495,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2024, amount $510,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2025, amount $525,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2026, amount $545,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2027, amount $565,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2028, amount $590,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2029, amount $600,000, interest rate 5%. Year 2030, amount $605,000, interest rate 4%. Year 2031, amount $610,000, interest rate 3%. Year 2032, amount $620,000, interest rate 3%. Year 2033, amount $625,000, interest rate 3%. Year 2034, amount $625,000, interest rate 3%. Year 2035, amount $625,000, interest rate 3.125%. Year 2036, amount $635,000, interest rate 3.125%. Year 2037, amount $640,000, interest rate 3.25%. Year 2038, amount $645,000, interest rate 3.25%. Year 2039, amount $475,000, interest rate 3.375%. Year 2040, amount $300,000, interest rate 3.375%. Year 2042, amount $630,000, interest rate 3.5%. Year 2044, amount $670,000, interest rate 3.5%. Further voted that the bonds maturen on March 1st, 2042, and March 1st, 2044. Each a term bond shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond due March 1st, 2042. Year 2041, amount $310,000. Year 2042, maturity, amount $320,000. Term bond due March 1st, 2044. Year 2043, amount $330,000. Year 2044, maturity, amount $340,000. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February 7th, 2019, and a final official statement dated February 14th, 2019, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing disclosure undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bond from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and called and thereafter posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 30A, Sections 18 to 25 as amended, dated February 21st, 2019, clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Let me do it this way, just to make absolutely sure there's no issues. Everybody has it in front of them?
The words...
It was just right, yes.
It was just right, yes. Okay, if we count, notice that the word "voted" or "further voted" appears seven times, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay.
See it visually?
Yeah, I understand, right, if we count, go ahead.
So just to be sure, I'm going to take seven different votes. We don't need to reread them, it's in the record. I'm going to refer to them as one through seven. All right, so I'm going to take a clerk's motion on each.
Can we discuss it before we do this?
Not until we've got a motion in a second.
Oh, I see.
You have a question about the process? This process?
I think so.
Okay, then go ahead.
And it came to light even more when the end of this was read. The posting is for bond anticipation notes. And this really is bond issuance, we know it is, we've talked about it, everybody knows. But as indicated here, the posting, 48 hours before.
Okay, so here's the posting there, if I have the correct one. Yes, the title is bond anticipation notes, but then it says explicitly, "Vote to award the sale of bond..."
Okay, good, good. So, okay, the important thing is, is that...
The heading there is...
This is good to clear up. So the agenda clearly says, and let me read what the agenda says here. Again, the title is bond anticipation notes, but it says, "Vote to award sale of bond dated March 1st, 2019 to Fidelity Capital Markets in the amount of $12 million, 780,000, with the true interest rate of 3.25%, a premium of $895,421.65, and a term maturing in 25 years, parentheses, June 30th, 2044." Close parentheses, close quote. Yes, so that, and having read it that way, I think it's important because it clearly matches what we say here, we posted it that way. Thank you.
So we want to be careful on the headings in the future. I'll use a more gentle heading such as authorized borrowing, something like that, if we're not sure of what the actual notes are. We okay now, Dick? You okay? All right, so we're going back, so again, it's by reference, it's in the minute, in the documents, it's on board docs. So if you would be kind enough just to make a note to what we're going to call vote number one, you move to vote in code to number one as stated in the start.
Motion to approve motion as stated in vote number one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this vote?
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand the bonds that we actually are flowing and how they were set out. The school roof, first of all, the water treatment bonds are clearly established. They are essentially equal principal, as planned, as discussed for some time. The school roof, though, varies dramatically essentially from bond to bond. I was wondering why there is so much difference. And it's not even aligned in this direction and aligned in that direction, it kind of varies. Do you know, Kelly, why we have it as such?
The financial advisor and the treasurer and bond council have approved the outline of the structure and how that happened. So we don't have any specific answers, but I do know that they fully reviewed it before it came to this board.
So they're saying that it's valid in the pieces that they have, but why do our pieces have us spending less than some years than more and then less for essentially the payment of the school roof project? It's something that would happen when somebody put numbers together to make it happen, and it's very awkward, it seems to me, both in the principal and the interest, especially in the case of the school roof. And clearly, though, okay, and then in the case of the town hall, it's a drive towards equal payment because the principal clearly goes up as... That is almost, that's a straight line essentially, you have to average out the amounts, you have to average, you have to round the amounts to like $5,000 for bonds and that.
Believe that the water treatment plant was decided to be an equal payment over the course of the entire repayment period versus the schedule in debt repayment schedule for the other two projects?
Just clarification, I'm with you, but it's just the opposite. In the case of the water, it's equal principal, the payments go down, and that's fine.
Yes, yes, equal principal.
That's the way we always say, equal principal, not equal payments.
The other one is level debt. And the level debt payment is the repayment schedule for both the schools and for the town hall. So there is a difference, one of the reasons being is that the water commissioners did vote on this structure, and this is how they wanted to do that and weigh the impact of this decision on their water rate structure versus the other option, which was pointed out for the debt exclusion projects under the, for the schools and for the town hall project. And that is within the discretion and statutory responsibility of the treasurer to be able to decide that. And that's why it was structured the way it was.
Dick, as I look at the Excel spreadsheet there, the Excel spreadsheet, as I look at it, seems to indicate that the debt service remains fairly even, right around $350,000, or more than that each year going out. I think the difference is sometimes reflected in, my understanding is, and I may be wrong in this, that when they're working out options, they look at the market for what they would like to do, and the market makes a decision, they want this amount or they want that, you know, this amount for that kind of interest rate, so that they can vary in order to get better deals based upon what the market's looking for. But most significantly, as I look at what's shown here, it's set up by fiscal year.
So here's an example, though, if you would, that's the...
School roof. If you look at the total payment, it's even, pretty much even for this $12 million bond.
And the...
Even payment.
Interesting thing is, even, you have a case where we have an increasing principal in part of the town hall.
Right.
It clearly goes up. But in order to do that and the schools not have that and have, if you would, equal payments, then it's very...
But essentially...
It's very messy, and I'm trying to understand why, you know, we have things like that. It's neither this nor this.
We're looking at different...
This is the data, this is that data. It's that, that data is...
Oh, you're looking at the principal, I'm looking at the total payment. The total payment stays...
I understand, but it's not, the issue is the project. How much is the project being funded by year? And again, the school funding is very different. And I'm just trying to understand why it came out quite like that.
Do you see a problem with the numbers, Dick, in overall and what our...
The numbers add up, the numbers add up, but it is a strategy. And essentially, the strategy, in this case, especially, well, both for the schools when you do the equal payments, but especially with the school here, where you see very little in the beginning, then it just climbs. It's like, okay, we're going to get the benefit of it now and for 20 years. Most of the benefits right now, because it's the newest, usually, that that, maybe not so much at school roof. But actually going to pay more later on. So, but it's very awkward that it's, it's not even as straight line as we have with the town hall, which those bonds made it clear that we're looking for an equal payment. And the school roofs doesn't quite look that way there.
But this, this is an equal payment strategy. The largest payment on the fiscal year is no more than $5,000 greater
Yeah, that's understandable.
Than the smallest payment.
But that's because of both of them are together, okay? And you have one where we have the principal going dramatically up, but not in the case of the school. Okay. We don't have an answer to it. The bonds, in my case, are legal. So I will let it go, but I believe we need to manage bond council as to what we want more than what the bond council is saying and doing.
I give back to, Dick, is there an issue when you look at it in aggregate? The town is responsible in aggregate for the payment for the schools and for the town hall.
That's legal. The process from our point of view as fiduciary responsibility as the selectmen is to say, is this truly fair to the town? Especially when we see, as I said, for the school was dramatically, the graph has neither this nor this.
For the school in particular, but we put them together. That's what the town owes, and the town is responsible for both paying of the town hall and for the schools.
Absolutely.
So in the aggregate, does it matter underneath whether one is being paid at a certain rate versus another, since we have to pay them both? And this is what the town council...
Sure, it makes a big difference, of course. We're buying coke over here and you're buying widgets over there. It makes a difference if you're paying for them differently. Maybe that's value, this has less value, this is more. If that's the case, but these are basic capital projects for buildings, so I'm not sure why, and I'd just like to understand why. In my case, I think it's unfair, but okay, we've got it, it's legal.
Unfair at home?
Well...
To home?
In this particular case, where the costs are going up, it's unfair to the future taxpayers more than the current ones. Equal payments will achieve that too, whether you want it or not, because you increase your, you're not taking advantage of having paid principal. You have equal payments instead of an equal principal.
Conversely, is the town hall being loaded a little more heavily at the beginning than the end to give us this somewhat consistent aggregate view?
In the case of the town hall, we pay principals, which is, in the beginning here, is about what? $145,000, and the ending ones are up to about $350,000. So, yeah, those are increases. Again, that's a straight line, except for, as you said, rounding off, you have to round them off.
And one of the things they were trying to consider was keeping the payments for 2020 and 2021 lower. We had that whole discussion about use of free cash, trying to come up with a creative approach to this, to make those two years less of an impact to the taxes.
And that's been thrown against the schools. That reduction is applied to the schools, as you can see. That's 56 and 60 the first two years, and then it goes up to 140, 150, 160. But that's where it's going up, but then it levels off and then it kind of goes down. Just looking at the graphs, it's hard to just look at the numbers, but... And it kind of levels off after about the first 10 years. It's pretty level, it goes down a little bit, but it's pretty level. Again, I'm just trying to understand what the strategy is and why we did it that way. And in answer to your question, yes, does it have an effect? In this particular case, in the case of the school, it looks like we're paying less now and more later. Legal, so I'm willing to go with it, but I sure like to know why we have that kind of strategy.
Well, the same taxpayers who are paying the bill to pay off the school are paying off the town hall. So when you say it's unfair to future generations, these are consistent payments, whether, you know, now or later, from a town perspective.
From a town perspective, but a project, but...
The project underneath, we have to pay for the...
It's like having one project pay for a different project.
It's the same person paying the bill. It's like me paying my Macy's or my Visa. If I pay a little bit more with one versus the other, I'm paying for both. The town is paying for both those projects.
The other variable is that we still have outstanding loans and borrowing on the school project. So we can't close that out and permanently bond the total amount of that project until the MSBA authorizes us to close the project. So they have a holdback, and that's where the bond insurance payment notes of approximately $6 million still come into play. So I assume that a portion of this repayment structure is made to accommodate for the fact that there's still additional borrowing that will be done, I believe in November is when we'll be going and permanently bonding some additional funding, so that would be my guess.
So you intend to adjust the future bonding for this anomaly? That's an answer, that would be great.
I'm just suggesting it's another variable to be considered.
The future taxpayers will hold in harmless, that would be great, okay?
I have one, hopefully, simple question. Not long ago, we had a meeting with our members of our finance team here, Kelly.
Yeah.
And they presented us with a couple of options of bond. And we picked one. Does, to the best of your knowledge, is this consistent with that choice?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, this is consistent. There was some clarification with respect to years one and two principal repayment that was not available to us at the early stages of the budget process.
When to the next step?
Yes.
Because option one with $6 million in bonds, option two with $10 million.
The fact that we're bonding $13.5 million now instead of six indicates that we're following the will of the board in the way we discussed it.
No question about that.
Because I, this may not be the example, but I have the view that we were very diligent this time in trying to get to the board earlier in the process and providing more and better information, and I applaud that. So that's why I'm just trying to confirm that we stayed on a consistent...
Absolutely, it was very helpful for us to do that, to consider other variables as the treasurer and the accountant and myself sat with bond council and with the finance, our financial advisor, to come up with this exact schedule.
So we have a motion and a second, as stated in this document of today entitled, "Vote of the Board of Selectmen," yeah, that's what I'm labeling the first vote. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll detain a clerk's motion relative to what I'm going to call the second. It's called "further voted."
Move to approve the motion as stated for vote number two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Same for three, please.
Move to approve the motion as stated for vote number three.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four?
Move to approve the motion as stated for vote number four.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Number five?
Move to approve the motion as stated for vote number five.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six?
Move to approve the motion as stated for vote number six.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And seven?
Move to approve the motion as stated for vote number seven.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And other board members have confirmed my seven vote count, have you?
Confirmed.
Thank you. Okay, one more. And Debbie, that's everything. Do you need an original sign, by the way? We got a whole stack of stuff.
That's a whole stack. This is for Lynn.
Because this is somewhat complicated, I'm going to pause and have a sign while I'm trying to talk.
We don't want to miss anything, or we'll be hunting you down on a date tomorrow. You know, Bob will be hunting you down.
Do you have to sign these other ones, Lynn?
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to guess there are other...
That's all, those are all just for you. This is for the board. We'll all go in the same direction. Yeah, we're just going to go in the same direction. These are all going to... Scott's are going to... Do you want to start with Mark? Mark should be at the top line, yeah.
I think they said you want to pass them around this way.
Maybe Lynn should...
I can see that they're all for the board. Yep, there's several.
Where are you going, that way or this way?
That way.
I could do me a...
I'm going to last one.
For the paper.
Great job, Lynn. Keep it up.
Yeah, it was good.
I need a hydrant. I chucked you. I know, right? You brought your writing utensils, bring an extra pencil.
I have no problem, they were four together at that.
Yep, yep.
But you don't want to do it that way the rest of the time.
Yep, these are fine. I just did it for mine.
So as we're doing this, and Lynn's already heard this, I had a medical problem yesterday. Going to that center for decades, but I had to switch doctors because it was like a four month wait for it. So I had a very nice doctor, but it was the first time I saw her, so I had a photo of forms. So I'm filling out about 12 pages, I get to the back page, the last one, and there's a line that says hobbies.
Board of Selectmen, Chairman of the Board.
So I paused for a moment, and I wrote town government.
We can take the sample out of that, can't we? The first one, would you want to keep it together?
No, I'd just keep them all together. I mean, if you can...
Okay, whatever it is, just fill in the first...
The rest makes more, but my clothes are frozen, you know?
Electric socks.
Yes. I have such electric socks.
No doubt, you're on your own.
You probably...
I didn't know they had weighted blankets. I know. Kids wanted weighted blankets. But what's the deal about those, though? What does it, is it help for pressure points? It's calming, I guess.
Yeah, it's calming, it's like swaddling the baby, it reduces the pressure.
I never heard of it, and my kids was like, oh, I'm about to have one, what is it? I had to Google it. It's an expensive blanket, basically. It's still the same, it's...
Is there a particular reason why we went out on the first of March instead of on the twenty-first or whatever it is?
I think this one, our existing plans expired on, I want to say the eighth or the ninth. It was a timing issue. We had to make sure we do this before the existing ones expire.
Yeah, it was like three weeks ago.
I think that's just the way that they said that they needed to handle it. They're reading out the timeframes now on a lot of these, which is why we almost had to reschedule this meeting. They don't like there to be a lot of time between the vote and the actual, or the when we go to bid versus when the vote is by the board. We're getting very strict about how much time can pass in between the various activities for the borrowing. It just makes the market nervous.
Debbie, use it coming one at a time. It's all right?
It's fine. Yeah.
Is there another clip that we'll see?
No, those are all just singles.
If we get to keep doing this all the time, don't borrow anymore, man.
Well, you have twenty-five years if we have to sign anything like this again on these budgets.
On these budgets.
All I can say is from the chair of the school committee signs the diplomas and you get handed, when you're a vice chair and going to be a chair at the graduation, you get handed three hundred and fifty diplomas. It's the most honors part of that job.
By the way, John, you were going to, are you aware of the fact that our credit rating went up?
No, I didn't hear that.
What? Triple A. We made it. We made it to the finish line. Congratulations.
So we're triple A?
Triple A.
Isn't that great?
You can get any better than that.
That is good timing is everything. This is fantastic.
It's on board docs too, in the correspondence section.
Actually, I did see an email. I have a couple through all the emails yet.
That's, no, I should have assumed that and sent you separately.
You know, I'm trying to hear it now.
That's like, John, there's no meeting on March fourth.
There is no meeting on March fourth. Thank you. You can tell it's kind of going through and see.
You get to go out and celebrate a triple A rating.
This would be the time to tell him some tall tales and go, did you hear that?
Did you hear that Masco's budget request came in ten percent under?
He hasn't gone away that way. It's a fantasy world.
He's not going to buy that.
But there is no super agenda, as you know.
I have a good one.
Which is good.
Have you heard that our insurance is going to go down seven percent next year?
Now, is that a tall tale or is that a...
Which insurance?
I don't have it in writing, but I'm told by a very good source that our health insurance is going down seven percent next year.
Last we heard it was going to be a zero percent increase. Now it's going down?
Well, you know, John left town and I didn't want to make the announcement. I just recently found out.
They hate that determination because the risk guy left town.
No, really, you guys just heard from our advisor.
That's great.
It's the best, it's the best
That's good. Comes up good.
Out of all of the pool, we're the best and we're going to have the best rate out of everybody.
And now we're going to have good water on top of it.
Right. No may these lower health insurance.
Well, we're making water, you know? We're making water.
So I was thinking we should set up a site visit to the water treatment plant.
We can't use it, so we're dumping it in the woods.
Should we set up a site visit to the water treatment plant?
It hasn't been approved by the D U P yet. We are going to be, the projection is to be online anywhere we're like in about the second week of March.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Good idea.
Kelly, would you say?
Okay, so what I was suggesting is that if the board would like us to coordinate a site visit to the water treatment plant, I'd be happy to coordinate that. I did a walkthrough. Well, I'm sure Boyd probably beat me to the punch, but we did, the finance team did a walkthrough about a week ago. It's pretty fascinating.
It's going to blow you away.
Right? I just left there thinking, wow, Greg is like boy genius. Like, he keeps walking around that place. Oh, this is, I just, this is the who's and what's it. This is the, all the different rooms and I was just like, did he teach you this in school?
That was one set. This is Starbuck on the news this morning.
Yeah, he said, no, I went to school for civil engineering and oh, yeah, you learn, you learn a lot of this. And I said, well, you know, did you learn how to build a water treatment plant when you were in school for civil engineering? He's just, we're lucky to have him. Very smart. So I haven't seen anything in writing, but I wanted you to be the first to hear that.
That's good.
We're still waiting for the official written document from Maya.
And that's primarily because of our usage?
It's a combination of a few different things. I think the plan design has helped us. Our utilization has helped. One of our major cases has fallen off of the grid. I think they use a three-year period to look at utilization, and so the timing of them worked in our favor. So the highest increase that they're going to have is five percent. And we are basically the best in terms of, it went from our negative seven all the way up to five percent in terms of the whole pool and who's seeing increases or decreases. The average was point six percent increase for everybody in the whole pool. So...
I bet they're pretty glad about that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be too bad. We would be more.
Right. So has Masco given their numbers? Because I had heard that our region, like our little corner of the world, that the numbers looked pretty well, but not as well as Toshville, as you said.
I doubt Masco in Toshville.
No, no, we already know we're, we got the best. We're the most, the biggest reduction this year for our rates.
Well, at the Maya meeting, they said that there were three, I think, towns that had gone from the G R C back to Maya. They didn't tell us if anyone went from Maya to G R C. But the fact that someone came back out of the G R C was quite interesting to me.
Right.
Debbie, did this just erase all of our paper savings from board docs?
Just about.
No, it just, it just got us thirteen and a half million dollars, is what it did. Actually, it's less than that because we didn't have to borrow thirteen and a half. We borrowed less because of the premiums.
Yeah, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand was pretty nice.
Do we know other than, Kelly, what was the savings because of our triple A rating?
No, it's not, it's not an exact science. You know, there's so many variables that go into it. The day, the time that you go to market.
Even an eighth of a percent.
Even an eighth or a quarter.
Makes a huge difference over time.
Someone asked me what they think the difference would be, and I thought, just to have a number, you know, close enough government word to say.
The only thing I can use is the fact that we estimated four and a half, I think.
I think it was a four and a half. Four and a half percent?
Yeah, for our projections. It's either four and a half, and I don't know if they adjusted that in the course, but I think that was the number we were working with. So at the very least, we're going to be adjusting our actuals compared to projected. Now, shall we?
So they're talking a quarter?
That's what it is.
I think, but did you hear, I thought it was a quarter. I want to say about a quarter on estimate.
Twenty basis points, I find.
Yeah.
Eric Metzer said point two-five, twenty-three basis points.
That's pretty significant.
Oh, it's very significant. You're absolutely right.
That's why the priority to get honestly done and everything else, pay dividends for twenty-five years. It's great.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We all set, Debbie?
Yeah, I just, I was just saying to take that, under the minutes, I had, there was like a word there or two I took out of a draft, deleted it, sort of put the new one in, but for some reason it's coming up. They're both still in there. I don't know why both sets are in there.
Which set, Debbie?
On the twenty-fourth and then on the fifth. I remember there was like a couple of words that we take out.
Oh, yes, yes.
He's just kind of looking at it. I just, unfortunately, I deleted one on the desktop and added the other one, but when I look at it here, they're both still in there. It didn't delete.
Okay, so are you all set on warrants?
Good?
Good.
We're all set?
If you flip through, just make sure.
I did. Yeah, I flipped through the whole thing, making sure there was nothing not tagged and...
Right. The next item is additional essential unfunded fiscal twenty budget requests. So I'm the one that asked for this to be drawn. Let me explain why. So I was, it's a timing thing at this point to me. So I was concerned, I was concerned that it was possible that from the point where we filled out our FinCom form that has certain ones of these listed, that discussions and work was being done that may have suggested other items be discussed. Not that they were meritorious necessarily, not that this board would ultimately approve them or any such thing, but I didn't want to get caught in a situation where a month or however long we have goes by and we decide, oh, it would be great to spend five thousand dollars on B B C. And the FinCom didn't even have it as a possibility. So from that perspective, I wanted to take a snapshot as to whether there were any things that were being complicated that were emanating from continuing discussions that personally I would rather, if there are any, maybe there aren't. I'd rather let Karen Dow and her colleagues know that they were possibilities and have them in the mix, which gives us the time to say, you know, this makes no sense whatsoever. Or this is indeed, if we had thought of this too much, it would have been in there. Anyway, I haven't said anything about the topics, but is that making clear about why I wanted to talk about this?
You want to get essentially every request up on the board in front of the, in front of the FinCom?
From us.
From us. Anything that related to the town, to the town government?
I don't know. I wouldn't do that. To the town hall, to the selectmen.
All the things under the, I'm sorry, but not other than...
Under our purview. Yeah, under our budget.
Yes, right.
Just, yeah, okay. So these are a couple of things as examples. Well, it's not mine.
So far.
Do you get it?
No.
And again, this is just in discussion stages, but we were, there were some discussions in various meetings and discussions that we were having about whether or not additional support to the town of our office would be prudent to look at. To support Kelly further, to also take a look at giving Debbie the ability to, for lack of a phrase, move up in terms of, not necessarily title her, but in terms of responsibilities. So when I go in, for example, when I go in there, which I knew at least every Wednesday morning to sign payroll warrants, Debbie's trying to get out the whole town's warrants and payrolls, whatnot, the filings and the filings and the filings, which is not to say that's an important part of what we do, is to be responsive to citizen inquiries, but clearly impacts your job description, which then impacts Kelly's job description. And I want to take this further along than it is, but I started to hear that. And I said, well, this is something we're talking about, and may or may not be a proposal for this town meeting. It may or may not be a proposal for the next year's town meeting, but I didn't want to get caught. And just as an example, that we want to spend, make it up to five thousand dollars to get an apartheid receptionist. Maybe this is a horrible idea. I don't know. I just wanted to give us time to look at those things. So the other thing was, as you know, in our list of who's trying to work from this board on different things, I'm working with Donna and Sue Winslow on trying to take citizen input to the website, into the website, and make it better, make it more usable, make it more streamlined. And we're doing that little by little, but we will get there. And the thought came, and what keeps happening is we have no webmaster, for lack of a better word. So phase one to me is improving the website. Phase two, though, will be when the website's improved, how do we make sure every board really puts their minutes on there? How do we make sure one of the boards isn't months and months behind in their minutes? How do we know that the great things that have happened in the last couple of weeks are actually on the news? That there's a management that's necessary. Perhaps we need to figure out how to do that within our existing structure or whatnot. The thought just came to me that one approach might be to do some kind of stipend. Like we have kind of a lot of those around town for an emergency manager or something. It's a stipend or something. So I wanted time to talk about that. And again, so say we give five hundred dollars, this is a totally off the top of my head idea, five hundred dollars a month to an existing staff person when we get to that point to be the webmaster, not in the technical step, but in terms of managing the town hall side, managing the information. That's what I keep hearing from people who were concerned with the website. What a part of it is, how it's set up, but the other part is managing what goes on there, you know? So it's those kinds of things. If, I'm going to turn it to Kelly. I know you have some thoughts of a totally different approach and whatnot. If you don't think either of those is merits for the discussion, or if there isn't anything else, I just wanted to check in if we have any, for lack of a more elaborate word, any other stuff that we might come up with between now and the time we do the warrant, I'd rather just kick over a list to Karen that these are things that, just put them in the, in the parrot documents.
Well, I can tell you from the last time that we met that there's a couple of little sort of pieces that need to be tied that are together. I'd like to use today's meeting as an opportunity to clarify and confirm what I've heard at a couple of different work sessions with regard to what has or has not been identified to this point. One of the things that I've heard at the prior meeting was if we want to add, and I think we discussed this somewhat, but I just want to be clear that what I've heard was that we would put another item on the table for five thousand dollars for Civic Plus end user enhancements and redesign if necessary for the website. And that that would be a recommendation to come from the PEG cable fund. So that reserve, that was one item. I don't know if we want to talk about that before I move on or just confirm, simply confirm that that's something you would like me to put in writing to give to the FinCom. Related to that is a thousand dollars additional. Right now, what I've requested or what we put in our original budget request was for, I think it was about four thousand dollars perhaps. And that was to provide, and I'll relay based on two and a half hours a week for an existing part-time person to take on two and a half hours a week to work on the website. That was identified at approximately four thousand. If we were going to talk about a stipend of approximately five hundred a month, I would probably request that that be increased to five thousand dollars as opposed to four. And that, again, that would come from the PEG operations for PEG operational funds because of the direct link between our cable system and being able to use our website in order to do direct online programming and to advertise and do video on demand. So there's a direct connection between our cable, our cable user, our ability to use the cable and our PEG fund appropriately and to get our meetings recorded and then out to the public. So that would indicate another thousand dollars that I would make amend my original request to five thousand, from four thousand to five thousand. That was one change. The other change, I'm not sure if I might be missing anything here, but those are the two that I've identified that I would want to highlight to the FinCom as they proceed with their proposals. I know they're meeting on Monday. They'll be talking about essential unfunded requests one more time. We'll want to reach out to our liaison and talk to them about, you know, the benefits of doing this and having these added into the budget request that we've already submitted. So those are the two that I can point to besides any other specific.
But those are coming from a dedicated fund for that purpose, right?
They're coming from the reserve fund that's been set aside for cable, PEG. Yes, we're collecting revenue every three months for that. So it's not general fund revenue that we're talking about.
It's an approval thing rather than a request to invoke additional money?
They still have to do...
Still need appropriation.
We need this appropriation, but it's not going to add to the tax for it because it's from, it's collected through another mechanism.
It's not going to throw up at that one.
I understand that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they still got to be involved. How much money is in that account?
It was about ninety-eight thousand the last time we looked. I have to look at it. I'll get another report before we, you know, at the next stage of the game as we start developing the warrant. Um, I think it more than, um, will cover this, even as an ongoing operational expense. But in the case that it doesn't, um, we are about to negotiate our next cable contract with both Verizon and Comcast. In the coming year, we'll, we're gonna be starting that negotiation, and we've already got a number of, um, different, um... We, we've already begun to talk with Comcast about our needs and to justify and document those. So I think we have a very good case to enter into negotiations, to look at our actual operational costs for providing cable access and that, you know, the recording and the televised meetings. Uh, so I feel that we have a very good foundation for building, and that these will be directly related. Um, and that, to me, it just seems like a no-brainer, it's just, you know, we've never really asked for that before. If you recall, last year was the first year that the Muni-Mon bill said that towns should vote on and appropriate an annual amount every year, whereas before it was just a reserve fund. Um, and so this is why the added formality is here, but in doing that, I was checking with other communities to find out what are the charges they're using their PEG access fund for, and this is just a smidgen. I mean, Middleton uses theirs for their website and other expenses too. So, I've found that this was completely in alignment and is sustainable, at least for the next two to three years, with the existing cable funding that's, that's there.
Yes, we have all this new equipment, like, what, rhetorical question, what's the point of having it on the wall if it isn't working? You know, I mean, we have these phones, that's what they're for.
In this case, buying the capital is one thing, supporting it is another.
Yeah, the target, it's gotta work, we have to make it work. And these are nominal amounts, $1,000.
So I just wanted to finalize the, this memo to the FinCom.
So, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot in terms of, there's nothing else that you can think of that after discussion, maybe thumbs up, or maybe it's thumbs down, but merits discussion at this board over the next couple of months, that we want to just let Karen know about? If there isn't, it's okay. I don't have any...
No anticipated additional surprises, or something?
Yeah, that's, that we just, you know, we had a ti, a time deadline to get in our budget, and that's okay, but our work continues twelve months a year.
Right. Well, I mean, I want to commend the board for addressing, for the first time that I can recall, the need, the, the actual need for additional support services within this office, in this department, because I'm only as successful as this board will hope to, you know, we're all in this together, we have to work together. Um, I really feel as though we've accomplished a lot in terms of being able to identify some of the needs. Working with Lynn on the IT infrastructure project has shed a new light on our IT needs. I guess my number one concern would be identifying any other potential expenses at this point in time may dilute our message in that our IT infrastructure and our facilities' infrastructure and support needs to really be prioritized above everything else.
Just pause for a second. So, are the adequate, is adequate funding for those two things in the budget that's been submitted?
It's an essential unfunded request that we would...
That has been made, is what I'm...
Yes.
That has been made, and it's an adequate amount. The, the great work that you and Lynn are doing together hasn't revealed that we put in for $5, but we need $7, or any such thing?
No.
If it was approved, it would be adequate.
Correct. And I just, how that fits into the overall picture and the need for additional support is that the time that Debbie, myself, and Donna are spending on facilities and IT, if we had dedicated support for those, um, for those specific functional areas, that would allow us, I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect, but that would allow us the ability to then refocus our efforts towards other more proactive measures as opposed to being reactive to when the server goes down. If, if we can get the server paid for through capital, if we can, we've also submitted a, a request for IT, a regional IT collaborative with Danvers, Middleton, Essex, Hamilton. As a next step of this process, we're looking at, um, coming together as a region and identifying what all of these needs are, and being able to tap into Danvers for some expertise that we just so desperately need. But we need to make sure that the money that we put out on the table with our request, that I feel it's sufficient as presented, but if it gets watered down too much and we stray from the message of the IT and facilities needs to be in the next budget, um, I'm just fearful that we might be bunding off more than we can chew if we add to that.
That's fine, I respect you, the, the, the strategy, and I think it's a solid one. So let me ask you one, one particular question. So with the items that have already been proposed, if they were fully funded, in that IT, between the IT request, however that ends up being tailored, and the money out of the cable, somewhere between that, there will be time to manage the data that goes on the website? Is that within those scopes? It's something that needs to be addressed.
What allows us to deal with the website more proactively are two things. Number one, $5,000 so that we can pay Civic Plus to help us with the final, with other enhancements.
I'm talking about the next step after that.
Oh, the next step after that?
The website has been approved, improved, sorry.
Okay.
It's more citizen-friendly, it's easier to find stuff, it's a little more streamlined.
Yes.
I'm talking about things like that. The $5,000 cable proposition I had with the Civic Plus guy, who said, you're gonna be able to do a lot of this yourself?
Yeah.
Maximum, you'll need seven grand. That if, if they, we really, and so I said, well, let's make... So that's where that comes from. I really appreciate that being in there, and I think it, it's important that it is funded so we can accomplish what we want. But so now, phase one is, is done.
Sustainability is $5,000 as a stipend for FY20 to allow us in-house support to continue to build on the success of those projects.
And what, tell me in plain terms, what that, what that, is that a person?
It's a person who's part-time, who might, um, work anywhere from, you know, three to five hours on average a week?
Yeah, it's currently, you're a view, a new person?
No, it's an existing part-time person who's making, who's working less than 40 hours a week.
So somebody who's currently employed, less than 40 hours, this would be in addition to that person?
Yes.
As opposed to finding somebody else there who has to spend $5,000?
We have the exact same concept, but a different word, and that's all.
We're just following along with the lines. So the person's less than 40 hours, they're actually, if they're part-time, they're less than 20 hours, correct?
I have no choice, I was using the language properly.
Well, that's, I just wanted to understand. So, is it a part-time person without, in other words, 19 hours, meaning that, or less, meaning that there are no benefits involved?
It's a part-time with benefited position that is under 40 hours. The reason 40 hours is important is because over 40 means that we have to pay them time and a half.
Right.
But they already have benefits.
They already have benefits, in their part-time.
That was my question, are we gonna, are we gonna enter a new era?
Step over into additional extra costs.
They're already benefits.
I'm not asking for...
That's okay.
It's an identity.
Okay, I, I understand.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, we have any minutes?
We do. Um, first one is the work session on January 24th, and since there are two documents in here, it is the second one.
The LV1?